Joy for their work and a personal peace. Blessed the discussions had here today and the decisions that will be made, that they would benefit all of our residents and our visitors. In all the names of the one we call holy, amen.
Thank you Pastor Taylor. Okay, moving along, does anyone have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda? Good?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five eight. Okay, number six is a public hearing. Okay, this is a request by Aaron Hutchins with Summit Design and Engineering Services, applicant to rezon approximately 1.34 acres. Zoned R-15 residential located at forty-five eighty South College Road to CZDCB, community business for a vehicle service station, minor and other limited uses. This is a public hearing, we will hear a presentation from staff. Then the applicant and any opponents will each be allowed fifteen minutes total for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. Yes, sir.
Thank you Chair, members of the board. This application is a request to rezone approximately 1.34 acres from the R-15 residential district to a conditional community business district for a maximum six thousand square foot minor vehicle service station. Located at forty-five eighty South College Road, both the site and the majority of the surrounding area have been zoned R-15 since nineteen sixty-nine. At that time, the purpose of the district was to ensure housing densities remain lower due to the need for private wells and septic systems. Since then, public water and sewer services have become more available in the area. Here, the aerial photograph details the surrounding land uses. Please note that those zoned R-15, both the adjacent north and south properties are non-residential in use. Northeast of the subject lot is the mixed-use plan development, Whiskey Branch. Directly east is the single-family residential development, Tinglewood. And west of the lot consists of both single-family and multifamily residential dwellings. Here's the same aerial photograph with images of the property from different angles. The top image was taken along Jasmine Cove Way, while the bottom was taken along the South College Road corridor. Here are examples of single-family residences you might see in the R-15 district. Image to the right portrays an example of a single-family residence found along a major corridor. This image is an example of a minor vehicle service station that is similar to what is being proposed at the subject parcel. This particular service station is found along Market Street near Porter's Neck. Please note that within the classification of minor vehicle service stations, maintenance is limited to operations that involve small repairs to privately owned vehicles. These repairs include oil changes, wheel realignment, muffler repair and/or installation. As illustrated by the applicant's concept plan, the proposed development is located at the corner of South College Road and Jasmine Cove Way. The proposed development is to include a six thousand square foot building with ten bay doors. Five of the bay doors will be facing the eastern side, facing South College Road, while the other five will be on the western side. As per the applicant, each bay door is to serve an individual vehicle, allowing up to ten vehicles to receive maintenance at one time. And here we can see that the applicant has proposed two stormwater ponds. The applicant has also proposed a type A opaque buffer separating the developments from the parcel to the south. And while initially proposed with a private septic field, CFPUA sewer line was located two hundred feet west of the site and connection to the public utilities will be required. This is an illustration of the proposed structure along with the estimated elevation. Within the CB district, minor vehicle service stations are permitted by rights. However, there are additional use standards that apply, such as there shall not be any work outside doors unless performed except in designated areas. Outdoor work areas shall be fenced, walled, or screened to minimize onsite and offsite noise, glare, odor, and/or other impacts. The applicant has proposed access from both South College Road and Jasmine Cove Way. However, NC DOT has noted a preference limiting the number of driveways that tie into the South College Road corridor. These arrows detail the means of entry to the site from both proposed access points. These arrows illustrate exiting the site. And here the arrows detail two points along South College Road where travelers can perform a U-turn. Both locations are within one thousand feet of the development. Nearby, there are two approved subdivisions under developments and one state transportation improvements program. The two subdivisions are higher-density projects that have triggered a traffic impact analysis and the details of which are in the staff report. If developed with the site's current zoning district, a maximum density of three single-family dwelling units would be permissible, generating approximately two AM and three PM peak hour trips. The proposed conditional rezoning to community business is for the development of a minor vehicle service station, which can generate an estimated thirty-five AM to fifty-two PM peak hour trips. However, it should be noted that within the CB district, the potential land use to generate the highest estimated traffic would be that of a childcare center. This use could generate a maximum of sixty-six AM and sixty-seven PM peak hour trips. And though, through the proposed CB rezoning, the estimated traffic generated from the site will remain under the one hundred peak hour threshold and therefore not trigger the UDA's requirement for TIA. Prior to any development, the project will be subject to NC DOT's driveway permitting standards. Due to the site's size and proximity to the College Road corridor, the parcel is less likely to be developed residentially. The proposed development is located within a mile of the Monkey Junction growth node. While the immediate portion of South College Road corridor has not seen commercial growth, the CB district is designed to provide lands to accommodate development of businesses that serve surrounding neighborhoods with goods and services needed for a variety of daily and long-term purposes. It should also be noted that the Whiskey Branch Plan Development, upon completion, will have a commercial component added along with the South College Road corridor. On July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners adopted a new strategic plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight. This plan focuses on three core areas: workforce and economic development, community safety and well-being, and sustainable land use and environmental stewardship. The proposed CB rezoning will allow business that can support the surrounding community to locate in a transitional area along a major roadway corridor and in close proximity to a number of households. The strategic plan aims to prepare for the long-term needs of businesses and to maintain new business growth within two and a half percent of the state. The proposed commercial zoning district will enable a new business. The comprehensive plan designates this property as being a part of the community mixed-use place type. This place type includes commercial uses and encourages infill developments along highway corridors. In addition to serving as a transition between the highway and neighboring residential uses, the proposed project will provide a use that could be appropriate in nodes as well as transitional areas while providing service to nearby residents. At the August third planning board meeting, the proposed rezoning was met with a vote of seven to zero in recommendation for approval. The planning board found that the application to be consistent with the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan. The board also found recommending approval of the project was reasonable and in the public interest because the proposal allows service-oriented use that could serve as an appropriate transition between the highway and existing residential uses. As a result of the policy guidance of the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review, staff concurs with planning board's recommendation of the request with the following conditions related to buffer yard and street yard requirements: driveway access, tree retention, utilities and a limit to the permitted uses for the rezoned property. Tree retention, utilities, and a limit to those permitted uses to the property along with a condition listing the full permitted uses the applicant has proposed in their application. Should the rezoning be approved, development of the site will be subject to additional development review to ensure all land use regulations are met. This concludes my presentation. Mr. Jamar Johnson of the WMPO and Mr. Tim Lowe of Engineering are here to answer any questions with their, within their expertise. Also, the applicant has prepared a presentation and can answer more in-depth questions relating to the proposed developments.
Thank you. You got any questions? Everybody good? Okay, thank you. Is the developer here?
Good evening.
Evening.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I appreciate your time this evening. My name is Aaron Hutchins with Summit Design and Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Christian Brothers Automotive to present to you our request to conditionally rezone the parcel located at forty-five oh eight South College Road. I'd also like to thank staff for their very thorough report. I'll try to keep my redundancies to that report to a minimum to keep things moving along. In general, a brief overview of Christian Brothers Automotive. They are a low-impact, environmentally-friendly automotive service provider with a concentration in light automotive maintenance repair services such as diagnostic testing, brake inspections, fluid maintenance, oil changes, as well as cooling system maintenance. All cleaning supplies are environmentally friendly. Christian Brothers Automotive sets an aesthetic standard for automotive repair with their architectural style and materials, both of which provide a non-intrusive, small college look that fits within the communities in which they operate. Their standard hours of operation are seven AM to six PM Monday through Friday, with the one exception being Saturday hours that they conduct or hold business within the first one hundred and eighty days of business. Presently, Christian Brothers Automotive has nine stores located throughout North Carolina and their franchisees play an active role, franchisees, excuse me, play an active role within their communities. Here you can see the minimum requirements that CBA necessitates that they need for a new site location and it requires evaluation within a three-mile radius of the property. They need a population greater than thirty thousand people, an average household income of eighty, uh, greater than eighty-five thousand. You can also see their minimum lot frontage, as well as debt required, requirement for the, debt requirements for the property as well as size and obviously the optimal use. Christian Brothers facilities are developed to a higher standard that fits within neighboring developments. Their shops service approximately forty-two hundred vehicles per year per shop and they are highly rated on places like Google and they're also audited by the AAA and Repair Power. The lobbies within Christian Brothers Automotive's facilities are, and reception areas mimic those found, uh, that you would see in a doctor's office and/or hotel. The level of comfort makes the maintenance and repair process less threatening to the people of all walks of life. The entrance has a more inviting appearance, giving customers a sense of welcome and not that of a typical commercial retail facility. As you saw previously in staff's report, here's a vicinity map. Here's a zoomed-in view of the property area outline showing the parcel boundary and relationship to College Road and the existing condition. Here's a list of steps that we've taken to date to get us through the process. We had a pre-application meeting on April fifth. We've had numerous discussions on staff with regards to the use, zoning district type, and things of the like. We've compared, we've conducted a tree inventory with existing trees on site. We've all continued to have ongoing discussions with NC DOT as well as CFPUA. For the community engagement portion of the process, we created a mailing list for the county requirements. We conducted the community meeting on June twenty-seventh. Five members of the community were present at that meeting. With them, we discussed impacts of Jasmine Cove Way, residents' concerns for the need of a signal at the Jasmine Cove Way-Collide Road intersection and their concerns for, uh, for the removal of the trees on the property. In conversations with those members of the community at the meeting, we shared the requirements that the site must meet for buffers. We described the building, its materials, and how they would be utilized in conjunction with the vegetation to help minimize any noise impacts from College Road. And we've also agreed to share their concerns with NC DOT staff in our ongoing conversations, which we have done since. Uh, here again is a conceptual layout that you'd seen previously, denoting buffers, proposed drive-through locations, and stormwater treatment areas. Obviously, these, these areas in particular, stormwater treatment, will need to be designed and further engineered, but obviously, at a bare minimum, will be designed such to, such that they meet county code requirements. Christian Brothers is seeking construction of a six thousand square foot building that includes ten bays. Those bays are individual service bays, they are not drive-through bays. Five on the front and five on the rear. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. I'd like to thank you for your time. If you have any detailed questions, I have a representative from Christian Brothers here with me tonight, Mr. Billy Green, as well as the project engineer, Mr. Greg Thompson.
Aaron, let me first start out by saying the architectural detail that you put in is very much welcomed and I saw that immediately in my, you know, first look in our packets. So, bravo, none of that comes without a cost to you and putting that, you know, that kind of attention into detail in there. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
A couple of questions, will there be any gasoline sales allowed?
No, no gasoline sales.
Great. And have you done a tree survey on the property yet?
Yes, sir, we did that on April eleventh.
Great. So you have an inventory there. I noticed on your site plans, you still have, I guess, the remnants of the septic system that was initially planned, but I understand from your presentation and staffs that that's no longer going to happen. You're, you are definitely committed to tying into Cape Fear Public Utility Authority for sewer and water.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So I can assume that the trees that would be removed over the septic system will now remain, they're not noted on there. Right now, it looks like you're cutting them off. So there'll be more trees than what shows on your concept plan, right?
Generally, I would say yes, we'll certainly strive for that. Naturally, with making the connection to the sewer, there'll be some clearing associated with that, but we'll certainly keep it to a minimum. And ideally, it would be less disturbance than would have been required with the full septic area.
Wonderful. Well, other uses allowed include car repairs with spray painting finishing?
Uh, for that question, I'd like to pull up Mr. Billy Green.
Sure.
I'm not, I'm not sure if the zoning allows it or not, but Christian Brothers, we don't do any bodywork. We don't do any tire recapping, no muffler repair, any of that.
No painting, in other words, yeah.
Exactly.
Wonderful, thank you. And I was curious, and maybe this is a question for Wendell. I didn't see any sidewalk or multi-trail, multi-use trail along South College Road. I was wondering why that, that might be. See, you brought in the, the heavyweights.
Yes, sir, we, uh, you know, along Carolina Beach Road to the south, we have been requiring that as a condition from staff. Along the College Road corridor, we have not typically been explicitly asking applicants to do that. We did look into it and it was deemed that this particular side of the road was not where we would be meeting one in the future, potentially.
So no sidewalks on South College Road?
Along that side, that side.
Commissioners, Matt, there is a plan, yes, sir, for bike and ped, but it's on the other side of the road.
Thanks, Chris, I thought I'd seen a plan that had that.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to make sure I was hearing it right. Also curious, I, I think that, either Robert or Wendell, you might want to stay up there. The adjacent properties at Jasmine South and Whiskey Branch Plan Development, they're both under construction, but they were not considered in the traffic analysis for this project. Has there been any thought within the department of what the aggregate of the traffic impacts on that part of South College Road would be when you add all three of those projects, which are all right there in a cluster?
Has been in discussion, Rebecca can speak more on that, though.
And, and if we need to, I believe, Mr. Scott James is here for the MPO and Mr. Johnson's stead this evening. But if you recall in our presentations related to traffic impact analyses, the only project that was required to get a TIA in this vicinity was the Whiskey Branch project. And there were cer- certain components of area growth that they had to take into account in making that analysis, which could include background growth such as this. I don't know, Mr. James, if you would like to add anything additional to that?
Good evening, I can just confirm what Ms. Roth said. The way we would look at this development is not as a cumulative impact, but as its own development. And any preceding development that was approved would have assumed there would be some background growth. But we wouldn't require a small development as this proposal to perform a traffic study nor to take into account previous traffic analyses. It's evaluated in its own right.
Let me push back for just a second. We have a unique situation here. We're adding eighty-eight townhomes with one project. A lot more, I don't have the number, with Whiskey Branch. And I know we're using the numbers for a childcare center for this proposed project, even though it's going to be a ten-bay garage repair. So we have all those numbers, which are all going to hit at basically the same time. It doesn't make sense to me that we wouldn't consider that large amount of, you know, cars being dumped into essentially a one-block area. Why are we not looking at what that impact will be?
Commissioner, we evaluate each proposal in its own right. We would not hold one proposal responsible for the preceding applications. What we do take into account when a proposal requires traffic studies is that there must be some background growth to cover the smaller projects. But we would not take a small project coming at the end, if you will, of a series of developments and hold them responsible for the prior developments.
That background, I believe, is one percent, correct?
It is variable, but the lowest percentage we apply to a formal traffic study is one percent growth. Yes, sir.
And Commissioners Apple, I do want to mention as well, if you recall, and I know not everybody who's on the board now was here at the time that the Whiskey Branch proposal was approved, but there are a number of traffic improvements that were required by that development, including new signalization, additional turn lanes that could help alleviate that growth. In addition to whatever background growth, they also had to incorporate as part of that design and review.
So I'm taking it, nobody can tell me what the aggregate number is, correct?
Commissioner, we do not come up with the aggregate number that you are requesting. Specifically, to be fair to the applicants, when they are considered too small for a formal study, we would not, for example, add trips to the development to reflect previous trips or previous developments. We, we evaluate them as an individual application.
Thank you, that's all the questions I have at the moment.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
There's some two people to speak.
If the applicant can come back up, please. How many locations do y'all have? I noticed one in Cary and one in Holly Springs. Looks like y'all may have several stores.
Yeah, there's nine in North Carolina presently. The closest one's probably Apex, North Carolina, Grand Total.
So the Grand Total, right now, we have two hundred eighty, eighty stores located in thirty states.
Sounds good, thank you.
I just have one, one quick question. What are the hours of operation for the business?
Seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. The one exception being the first one hundred and eighty days, they will be open on Saturdays. Just to help get the business off the ground.
There were two people that had been.
I just have one more question. Thank you. Aaron, what's the typical lifespan of one of your facilities?
Uh, for that, I'll defer to Mr. Green.
So we've been in business for over forty years. We've never closed a single location.
Oh. I'm curious, then why, why did you tack on the childcare center and a series of other approved uses?
So, that was some back and forth between our, our legal team. So, we have an investor that comes in and they buy it and it just makes it more attractive and it just makes it more attractive on the resale, that you don't want to exclude everything.
But you, in forty years, have not, never closed one of your businesses?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
But an investor, the, the broader, the better it is for an investment.
Yeah.
Makes them feel more comfortable.
I, I get it, and thank you, that's a, a very good explanation. It just has been curious from the first time I looked at this, of adding these others on there, and you explained it, thank you.
There were two gentlemen signed up to speak, James Moore.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is James Moore, I live at one eighteen Tinglewood Drive. I am treasurer of Wilmington Shrine Club and president of Arab Shrine Club Holding Corporation. Own the property, we are definitely in favor of Christian Brothers obtaining that property. We have multiple offers. With a hundred and forty-four members in the club, I can tell you it was a task to agree on who would we agree would sell, we would sell the property to. The presentation by Aaron was fantastic. We are a direct neighbor, so everything they put up, we see on a daily basis. So they've got an aesthetically pleasing building going up. Their hours of operation and their consistency to keep the place looking clean was one of the major decisions that we chose to go with them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also Danny Gore.
I'm acting president of Wilmington Shrine Club this year. We've been looking at different options with this property since two thousand nine. We've looked at several different, as Jimmy said, we've looked at several different businesses. But because of the location adjacent to our shrine club, with Jasmine Cove, we wanted the right person or the right business in that property. And as Jimmy said, looking at all the options so far, Christian Brothers has been the most, or best option that we've found for a neighbor to the Wilmington Shrine Club and to Jasmine Cove. I've been to one of their locations in the Charlotte area. They keep a very neat property. Their building almost looks like a doctor's office instead of a, a car care place. I mean, they have a very nice waiting area. Their structures are, are put together very nice. I, I was impressed when I, I was in Charlotte area and just decided to go by one of their locations and, and look and see. We've not took this lightly. We've been looking at it, like I say, since two thousand nine. And when we were in the planning meeting, we were asked about different companies that had looked at the property. And one of the planning board asked, well, do they change, do, you know, do they do tires and all this kind of stuff? And we had a tire company looking at the property, but we felt it would create too busy, uh, a business for that, that section there with, uh, with us at the shrine club beside them and everything. But we've not took, taken this lightly. Jimmy Moore has done a great job with Christian Brothers and so far, we've not had anybody with the shrine club and, and you know, with churches, shrine club, or whatever. You, you know, everybody's looking at what you're doing as a board member or an officer of the, of the club business or whatever. So we've done our due diligence to try to get the right person in there. And I think we have, I, I think there'll be a plus to that area. And I appreciate you letting me talk.
Thank you. You got all that crowd to agree to something, you're doing your job. Okay, we have one person speaking in opposition, Michelle Eric. Did I butcher that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And thank you for what you all do. It's a, a important job.
If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Pardon me?
If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
I sure will. My name is Michelle Eric and I live at forty-six oh five Turtle Dove Court. And thank you all for what you do. I have some concerns, and I'm speaking in opposition to rezoning request Z twenty-three dash sixteen. And I'm in opposition because I have questions that I'd like to, for you all to consider. There was information today about the runoff in water and the environment in that area. My question is, will there be waste from the industrial chemicals? And how will that be stored? How will it be maintained? How will be protecting the space that we live in? Because I live in Jasmine Cove, which is directly in Jasmine Cove Way. There on the left, the shrine club, supposedly they will be, and then the shrine club on the right, as we come into our neighborhood, our neighborhood's back there. It's been there for quite a long time. I moved in in April of ninety-nine. A lot of changes have happened, as we all know, since then. But I want to make sure that the environment is protected. I'm glad that there's CFPUA hookup instead of the sewage, which would have to change, tear down more trees. That's a plus. My question is, the hours of operation, that's what they propose? They haven't sold a business that they, or closed one that they've opened? That's good. But who's to say they won't change this? And will that, those hours of operation be tied to the deed of the sale of that property? The next question is, the increase of traffic. I understand and appreciate all of the information that was shared about the traffic analysis not being required. Perhaps we should change that, because there is an impact that will happen. And there already has been an impact by Jasmine South, which isn't, people aren't living there yet. But when they move in, it's going to be really difficult to get out of our neighborhood. It's hard enough to get in because we don't have a turn lane headed south on College to get into our neighborhood, and it's terrible to get out almost any time of the day. Doesn't matter eight AM, it's worse, yes. Seven forty-five, six thirty, seven, it's bad. But in the middle of the day, it's also bad. The traffic, we used to have a traffic light. It, it is no longer there. Now we have confusing signs about who should yield to the U-turn. The center people making a U-turn or us coming out of our neighborhood on Jasmine Cove Way, turning south on College, which is a right-hand turn on South College. There's confusing signage there. And the, the amount of traffic increase will really make it even that much more dangerous and more difficult. I hope, what we heard from the Mr. Hancock at the traffic department several years back, that we don't have more accidents and then qualify for a light. We don't want that to happen. We want to keep our neighbors safe and keep ourselves safe and keep the community safe. My concern about Jasmine South and the decisions that are made here is related to this decision. And that was proposed as affordable housing, and it is now, lots are being sold or listed for three ninety-nine ninety-nine. Three hundred and ninety-nine thousand is not affordable housing for police officers and educators, teachers, which is how it was presented to you all when you made the decision. I hope that there won't be changes later to this environment, to this lot, to this business space. And I would like you to keep that in mind. And I ask that you not approve this rezoning and keep it as residential while planning for safe environmental growth in our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, each side has five minutes for rebuttal. Would y'all like? Would you like to answer any of those questions?
Certainly. Certainly, well, for two of the questions, I'll have to defer to Mr. Green, because he can speak directly to the operations of the Christian Brothers facility and answer those directly. Certainly, as far as the traffic impacts, you know, we're meeting was required by code right now. And, and that's the, the intention behind the development is to, to fall in line with, with those code requirements. As far as the issues that have been expressed as it relates to the, the adjacent development, we, we really have no control over that with what we're doing here. But to the, the waste disposal and storage, I'll, I'll hand it over to Mr. Green.
As, as far as the environment, I mean, we're heavily regulated by the state feds, so. Also, we're not a wash-down facility. We don't, it's not like, you know, back in the days where you would wash things down to drain. We don't do that. Very environmentally friendly. We also have, in the case of an emergency, we have, it would go into an underground tank. Then it would, we'd have a contracted environmental company that would come and remove the waste. But again, we don't wash things down in the drain, so it's not an environmental issue.
Anybody have any questions?
Could you address the hours of operation? I think the question was brought up by the Michelle Eric.
I, I don't know how to, to respond to the future of, you know, one day. I'll just say in our forty-year history, our hours of business are seven AM to six PM.
But would, would anybody that, in the event that y'all sold it, would that hold them to that?
So is, I think she might have made a comment about it being in the deed restrictions. It's not in our deed restrictions.
This is a, a point, I, I think that would be taking our authority to a place that we don't have authority. Just like we can't buy in a future board to decisions. There's no way I would vote to put restrictions on something that could happen thirty or forty years down the road on any piece of property. Just my comments.
Anybody else? Thank you. Ms. Eric, give you that five minutes for rebuttal if you would like to speak. You don't have to, but if you would like. Okay. All right. Anybody got any questions they want to ask?
I'm ready to proceed to board discussion if you are ready to close the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm closing the public hearing now. And before we proceed with the vote, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
Mr. Chair, we'd like to proceed.
Very well.
If I might just make a comment before you devote. It, it's, it's very impressive to see a seller who would vet the buyer before they decide to move forward and how successful that, that buyer would be in their business and what impacts it would have on the community. And I think you guys really went above and beyond to make sure that you were selling your property to someone who was going to be good to the community. So we don't, we don't see that a whole lot, so, but thank you for, for vetting your buyers.
Mr. Chair, very briefly, this application and really the whole process that the applicant has engaged in is clean. They followed the rules that we've set forth. And I think that it's appropriate for us to move forward with approving the rezon request. And to that effect, sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed rezoning to a CZD CB Community Business District. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the project provides for the types of commercial uses recommended in the community mixed-use place type. I also find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposal allows a service-oriented use that could serve as an appropriate transition between the highway and existing residential uses. I further move that the proposed conditions be incorporated into the motion by reference. And approval is subject to the applicant signing an agreement acknowledging the applicant's consent to all of those listed conditions. If the applicant does not provide a signed agreement within seven business days from the date of approval, then the rezoning application may be null and void.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair, with a couple of comments. Chiming in with what Vice Chair Pierre said. It's not every day that you get the chance to pick your own neighbors. And for me, the Arab Shrine Club has been one of those mainstays in our community for a long time. Y'all have done a lot of great work in our community, provided a lot of great resources to residents here as well. So I can see you not doing any harm, but only good things for our community, so I'm in support of the motion.
I got a feeling the Shrine Club's going to make sure that that place looks nice and well taken care of. So we had a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold opposed? Five vote? Next public hearing is a request by Adam Sosny with MH MJ LLC applicant to rezone approximately twelve point six eight acres. Zone B two, regional business with R fifteen residential located at fifty-three twenty-two Carolina Beach Road to CZD RMF dash M residential multifamily, moderate density for a maximum two-hundred-unit multifamily and townhouse development. Let's see here. Okay, now this is a, a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff. Then the applicant and any opponents will each be allowed fifteen minutes total each for their presentation and an additional five minutes for rebuttal. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. This is an application to rezone two parcels on Carolina Beach Road to a conditional RMFM residential multifamily moderate-density district. Shown here is a zoning map of the area. Highlighted in yellow are the subject properties. One parcel is zoned R fifteen, while the parcel closer to Carolina Beach Road next to the car wash is zoned B two. They are located on the southwestern side of Carolina Beach Road, west of the Monkey Junction intersection. The surrounding area that fronts Carolina Beach Road is primarily residential, commercial, while residential surrounds the property on the sides and the rear. There is an adjacent property to the northwest zone conditional RMFM. The Grove Park Mobile Home Park is to the southeast. This area was zoned R fifteen in nineteen seventy-one, and the B two parcel was rezoned in nineteen eighty-eight for compatibility with the Monkey Junction commercial area. As seen in the aerial photo, these properties border some commercial development and other residential development. The rear of the site is currently wooded. This slide depicts the current site, showing the shared entrance with the car wash in the center of the site. Shown here is an example of typical R fifteen development and an example of a B two shopping plaza in the Monkey Junction area. This slide shows representative developments of multifamily dwellings and attached single-family dwellings. The applicant's proposed concept plan includes a maximum of two hundred residential units, consisting of thirty-five townhome units and eight quadruplex buildings and one triplex building, and one hundred and sixty-five multifamily units and five apartment buildings. The overall density of the proposal is fifteen point eight dwelling units per acre. The concept plan shows two stormwater ponds and an amenity area. The development proposes connections to the adjacent Towns at Park Place townhome development, which was recently approved by TRC. As noted, the site is adjacent to an existing car wash with which it would share access. This site can be accessed a few different ways. The primary access to this development is on a service road that parallels Carolina Beach Road, which provides connections to the Monkey Junction intersection, along with a right-turn-only light to the south of the intersection. The site proposes connections to the Towns at Park Place with, which will allow it another access on the Carolina Beach Road. Additionally, the connections to the Towns at Park Place development would allow access on Antoinette Drive, which provides a fully signalized intersection with Carolina Beach Road. There are three projects with traffic impact analyses in the vicinity, and CDOT plans to make improvements to the Monkey Junction area over the next several years. A traffic impact analysis was conducted for the proposed project. The proposed development would generate approximately twelve more AM and seventy-eight less PM peak hour trips than under its current designation. The TIA required a few improvements. To create a northbound left-turn lane on Antoinette Drive with two hundred feet of storage and to provide a four-section flashing yellow arrow, modifying the signal plan to accommodate these improvements. At the service road near the car wash, to construct that site access with one ingress lane and one egress lane connecting to the existing car wash access. Lastly, and providing a stop sign for people traveling from the development towards Antoinette Drive. The proposed project would generate approximately thirty-nine more students than under its current zoning designation. The generation rate is updated on an annual basis using actual student numbers provided by the school system and provides a county-wide picture of the number of students each new residential unit is likely to yield, taking into account that most new residential units in the county do not provide homes for large numbers of school-aged children. These properties are located along the Carolina Beach Road corridor, adjacent to the Monkey Junction intersection. The county identified the Monkey Junction area as one of its high-growth nodes in the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan. The project can be accessed numerous ways, including through proposed connections to an adjacent townhome development. The site's layout places the taller buildings internal to the site, which is intended to reduce the visual impact of the development on adjacent uses. The townhomes are placed adjacent to single-family residential properties and some closer to the service road access point. While traffic is a concern in the Monkey Junction area, NC DOT's planned improvements are anticipated to alleviate some of those concerns. However, NC DOT is not projected to begin right-of-way acquisition until twenty twenty-seven. Earlier this year, the Board of Commissioners adopted a new strategic plan. This plan focuses on three core areas: workforce and economic development, community safety and well-being, and sustainable land use and environmental stewardship. The proposed conditional RMFM zoning will provide new multifamily and attached single-family homes in an area of the county that is largely single-family detached, or, excuse me, detached and can aid in achieving the target of increasing the housing supply to a level of one residential unit per every two residents. In addition, the proposed development is designed to minimize impacts to the stream on-site, and no wetlands or floodplain areas have been identified on-site. The twenty sixteen comprehensive plan classifies this area as general residential and urban mixed-use. This project is generally consistent with the comp plan's recommendations for the urban mixed-use place type. The overall project density of fifteen point eight dwelling units per acre sits in between the recommended densities of general residential at eight dwelling units per acre and urban mixed-use at twenty-five units per acre. The planning board considered this item at their September seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting and voted six to zero to recommend approval of the requested rezoning with one condition, as agreed on by the applicant. Several members of the public spoke in opposition citing concerns with the traffic in the area and stormwater. Lastly, I'll add that if approved, all development on-site would be subject to technical review committee and zoning compliance review processes in order to ensure full compliance with all ordinance requirements. Mr. Tim Lowe is here with New Hanover County Engineering and Stormwater, and Mr. Scott James is here with the WMPO to answer any questions that may come up under those topics. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to talk about the project and can answer any further questions.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. So it looks like there'll be a stub road from this project that will connect with Antoinette or road drawn in or cut in that will connect with Antoinette?
Yes, sir. There, there's, the, this project proposes to connect through the Towns at Park Place, which is the adjacent townhome development, which will go onto Antoinette Drive.
And there's green space in between those. Who owns that property, do you know?
The property directly to the northwest?
Uh, yes.
Where are you going to cut the road?
There's already a stub road there. I believe that is all owned by the developer of Towns at Park Place.
So the green space that's outside of the, on the other side of the yellow highlighted area? Does the developer own that property as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So there'd be more than one way to get in. Antoinette Drive, also the service road here that will connect, and then you can make a U-turn and all those things on College, Carolina Beach Road, correct?
Yes, sir. There's, there's several ways that you can enter and exit this property through. You could use Antoinette Drive. You could exit onto the service road and go all the way south to that U-turn on Carolina Beach Road past the islands and the fire station. Or you can go through the Towns at Park Place, and I, I wish I had my, where I could still touch the screen and show you all exactly what I'm talking about. But, or you can go straight north out of the Towns at Park Place development onto Carolina Beach Road to travel east.
If you, if you go out and hit the service road and go all the way down to the fire station stoplight, you still got to make a right there.
Yes, sir.
And make a U-turn.
Yes, sir. That's a right-turn-only light. That would be if you wanted to go, if you wanted to get to the Myrtle Grove Shopping Center, where that Bojangles is. Or you could, if you wanted to take a north on College Road, the most likely path would be to travel through the Towns at Park Place to Antoinette Drive to use the Monkey Junction light.
Or take the service road.
Yes, sir. You could do either one.
Or, or you could go to the stop, you can turn left onto the service road and stop right there, ain't it?
There is not a stoplight at the service road, but you could use the, the exit of the service road onto Carolina Beach Road to access the Monkey Junction light.
That's right, okay, I'm, you're exactly right. And there is a stoplight at Antoinette?
Yes, sir.
All those folks know that people come to their neighborhood?
I can't speak for them other than who was mailed the public notice. But I know that this, when this, when the Towns at Park Place came through for rezoning, there was discussion at that point, too, for the access point onto Antoinette Drive.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Um, Zach, the, uh, is there a formal agreement with the Townsend Park Place about the access to this proposed project?
I would let the applicant address that directly. Um, I know that it's a condition of the traffic impact analysis that they connect to Antoinette Drive but the actual legal agreement betwe- between the two property owners I would leave to the applicant to address.
It's pretty important.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the, uh, for emergency access as well as really providing the- the second, uh, secondary access to the new project. So, uh, but I'll wait until we, the applicant, when they come here and we'll ask him the same question.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ready? You've got fifteen minutes.
Well, I- I would like to thank Mister Dickerson for, um...
If you could sit here a minute, address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Amy Schaefer, I'm with Lee Case. I am here this evening, uh, on behalf of the applicant, Adam Sosny, um, property owner as well who's also present, as well as Mister Grady Gordon with the applicant and Mister Don Bennett, um, who is with Davenport who did our traffic impact analysis. Um, again, I'd like to thank staff and Mister Dickerson for their presentation. Um, these are just some illustrative examples of townhouses and multifamily that the applicant has done, um, in New Hanover County previously. As Mister Dickerson said, we are located, um, in the Monkey Junction growth node with a future land use classification of urban mixed-use as well as general residential. Here's again the, just another, um, picture of the zoning around us. Some of the neighboring properties and how they've been developed. And here's a copy of- of the site plan. I know it's a little difficult to see. Um, this is a proposal for thirty-five single-family and one hundred and sixty-five multifamily homes. There would be a required Type A opaque buffer adjacent to any current single-family residential zoning and it is a decreased overall trip generation from the current zoning. I would like to point out that general residential, um, is at eight units per acre. U M X is at twenty-five units per acre. Our project is coming in in between those at just under sixteen units per acre. So we've tried to take the overall density of both projects and, um, come in in between those. Um, Mister Barfield, Commissioner Barfield, I think you had some questions about that green space to the north of us. Um, this site plan has attempted to take the Townsend Park Place which, uh, Mister Dickerson said has already been approved through TRC and kind of show you how the- the projects would all connect with Antoinette Drive. Um, there is a slight difference in this site plan from the one that we submitted. If you look to the west of the property, the Townsend Park Place, that back connection, um, was a little further to the west than we had initially thought. And so just to make it consistent and that was something that the planning board noticed at- at that meeting. And so here is a copy of the site plan showing some of the setbacks. Um, what we heard from a lot of the residents was how far back are you gonna be from my property? How close are you to my home? So we came up with this, um, excuse me, with this concept plan to show that. Another concern of the residents was the dumpster and- and the noise. Um, we do have valet trash pickup at our projects and as well as the enclosed trash, um, containers which you can see. That's what the pictures are at the bottom of the screen, um, just showing that we do have the- the enclosures. In addition, um, we're gonna be retaining about three hundred, um, I'm sorry, about two hundred trees onsite. Um, twenty-four inch live oaks, seventeen inch live oaks, fifteen inch live oaks, among others, magnolias and- and other kinds of trees through our tree survey. And so another question was what does it mean for a Type A opaque buffer? So these are just pictures of Type A opaque buffers around that have been fully grown in. The- the idea is you leave the current trees, as much of them as you can, and then you supplement with additional material so that within one year of planting that you have an opaque buffer. Again, just some additional renderings of what the product type we hope to bring is. Uh, the housing needs study, there- there is clearly a gap even with the update that there is a massive need in New Hanover County for homes. Um, again, we had a wetland delineation done and- and there are no wetlands onsite. And with that, I am at my traffic portion of my presentation. So I'm gonna ask Mister Don Bennett to come up and hopefully walk you through this, um, traffic impact analysis we've done.
Good evening, Mister Chair, members of the board. As noted, uh, the trip generation for this particular site was over in the P M P by nine trips, so a traffic impact study was- was required. One of the things we keep hearing, uh, through the public process is that we assume that the trip generation for a site is based on two cars per unit and all two, everybody's leaving at the same time in the morning and coming back at the same time in the evening and you'll hear the four hundred trips associated with it. In fact, what we're looking at here is a project that generates, um, excuse me. A project that generates eighty-seven trips in the morning and one hundred and nine trips in the evening. As noted, the hundred and nine is what pushed us over. So we are looking at something that did perhaps provide a study. Uh, as you can see in the P M, there is a reduction. However, one thing that was not covered is the daily number of trips that are reduced. And when we look at the byright uses that were used by staff in generating traffic, the daily numbers are off by around two hundred and sixty to two hundred and seventy depending upon the methodology. So this site would generate two hundred and sixty to two hundred and seventy less trips on a daily basis than the, uh, existing zoning. Talking about the traffic, what we have here is a recommended improvements diagram from the T I A and as noted, uh, there is a two hundred foot left turn lane provided on Antoinette Drive. In addition to that, a left turn arrow will not only be provided for the persons on Antoinette Drive, but the T I A also requires the developer to modify the traffic signal to provide a left turn arrow for the movement coming out of the car wash or the, um, the old Kmart site, uh, from many, many years ago. It's currently Lowe's Foods and Ashley Furniture, I believe. The site access to the site comes through an existing, uh, sixty-foot frontage that is on Antoinette Drive. And those lots that front Antoinette Drive are approximately a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five feet deep. Therefore, the protected stem required by the T I A would also be accomplished because there are, there is private property flanking either side of that access. This, uh, illustration shows what Miss- Miss Schaefer had and illustrates that, uh, two access points are provided for the site. I think there was some concern that traffic may filter in through the adjacent private streets. However, when we look at the road network for vehicles, let's say, heading back towards River Road, uh, all of the roadway network headed back towards River Road from Antoinette is public and maintained by North Carolina Department of Transportation as are all the roadways to the front of the property. The private roadways would require you to leave the site and then actually turn to filter back through a neighborhood, none of which connects back to, uh, back to any of the major roadways. So there's really no emphasis for traffic to move out that direction. As noted, there are two signalized accesses for this and as noted, the one to the south, that would be for only if you were headed south from the project towards Carolina Beach or returning from Carolina Beach towards the project. The bulk of the traffic was pushed out towards Antoinette Drive and through the service road and as noted, if you wanted to go north on College Road, the assumption is the most convenient direction to do that was to make a, to go onto the service road and then make a right on the Carolina Beach Road and proceed eastward towards Pioneer Road and make a left and go north on College.
And with that, just quickly, we'd like to go through our factors for rezoning approval. Um, we are, with this project, we would revitalize commercial corridors and blighted areas, provides an appropriate transition between commercial and residential and provides housing opportunities close to services by creating a greater variety of housing opportunities, especially in the Monkey Junction growth node. We are compliant with the future land use plan and the comprehensive plan. As I stated, the requested density is less than the average of both the urban mixed-use and general residential place types and it provides a mix of housing types. And again, um, again, the maximum density, um, for multifamily medium is seventeen and we are just under that at fifteen point eight units per acre. The property to the north of us was recently rezoned to multifamily medium as well and it will serve as a transition between the surrounding residential and the commer- commercial nodes. So, um, with that, I'm available for any questions and Commissioner Zappel, your question. Um, yeah, I have time. Um, there, at this point, is no formal agreement with the Townsend Park Place for that connection. Um, my understanding, we are discussing that, um, but they just received their TRC approvals. It would also, you know, be a public vehicular area for any emergency vehicle access is my understanding, but we will work through all of that. It's a requirement of- of the T I A that- that we have that connection under the current T I A.
Um, you may respond. Uh, Amy, uh, thank you for that and looking into it and addressing it. Uh, the roads that will be in the, uh, the Townsend Park Place will all be private roads though, right?
It's my understanding that they are, that they are private roads.
Right. So they'll be under the control of the H O A?
Correct.
Not the N C D O T?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So without a formal agreement, they can keep that a private road?
Yes, sir. Um, now, emergency vehicle access is a di- is a different matter on a public vehicular area. Um, it's my understanding through the chapter twenty that emergency access, we are working for a, uh, full access and part of their requirement was to stub to this property and that's part of the requirement for the TRC review as well for our property to stub to their connections.
So there's more to come on that is what you're saying?
More to come, yes, sir.
Um, if I could continue, uh, Amy, I think that, uh, if we could address the, uh, the school issue with eighteen additional elementary school children in- in Bellamy, already a hundred and eight percent of capacity. What are your thoughts on that? Is that, you know, that's essentially a, uh, another classroom?
But perhaps, um, up until very recently, New Hanover County schools, um, enrollment has been declining and studies show that multifamily housing generates less, fewer, le- less students, uh, per unit than single-family houses. And I apologize to the grammar police. That's one of my, my, um, weaknesses right there, lesser, fewer. But, so, uh, in addition, one of the things that hasn't been talked about is that the B two parcel can actually have residential components on it with a special use permit that would be allowed by right and there's no limit, upper limit on those numbers. And so that hasn't been factored into any kind of student generation or traffic with this proposal, that additional residential that would be allowed onsite.
But Amy, we're not looking at a B two. We're looking at the project you have in front of us.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, yes, sir.
And the numbers that we have here are the numbers that came from our staff and from you. Uh, and there's an additional issue with the high schools of fourteen additional students which will put them over capacity as well. Uh, we have two hundred, you know, units that are coming in here. Uh, I think that these, the numbers they're talking here are actually pretty conservative.
They always are.
Yeah. Uh, so I, I was just wondering if there was, you know, any, I know there's been thinking about it, but if there was any other strategy on your part, uh, to address what's clearly gonna be a stress factor on two schools that are right there, Bellamy and, uh, Ashley. But it doesn't sound like...
Rob, if I could say, um, I wish all y'all could have been at the award ceremony last Wednesday night for the schools. And as tough as Bellamy has it, you know, a lot of people say they don't want to go to that school. It's not a good school. It was picked as one of, I think it was fifteen or twenty elementary schools in the United States. They won an award and they're going to Washington DC to pick it. Uh, um, these schools can handle a little bit more. Uh, if they couldn't, they would tell us. But at some point in time, we're gonna have to address it.
I see that and I also see the numbers that, uh, for the capacity which include portables as well. So it's overcapacity with portables.
Well, I mean, they're, the way it is now, I talked to Eddie Anderson. Like you said, some of the schools are coming down. Some of them are going up and they're moving the portables around. It's not the greatest thing, but we got good teachers.
Mm-hmm. I hear what you're saying, Mister Chairman. Um, if I could, I'd like to ask another...
Absolutely.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Um, the, uh, traffic counts, uh, for the Townsend Park Place, it feels like these two projects are really tied at the hip, uh, in- in many ways, especially with the connection that we're counting on for this project, you know, going through, uh, the Townsend Park Place. And we've got, uh, eighty-eight townhomes that are there and we already have daily trips which I know Mister Bennett, you addressed them, thirteen hundred and forty-nine by the new one. Do we know what the, the number of daily trips from the, you know, Townsend Park Place will be?
I- I believe that that had to be studied as part of our T I A, but let me see if Mister Bennett can address that.
Great.
Yes, sir. Mister Zappel, in the scoping of our T I A, we were provided with the adjacent development and those were required to be added in as existing background traffic. So to your, to answer your question, from the standpoint of looking at the impacts and looking at the mitigation necessary to address those impacts, trips from the Park Place project were included in this traffic study.
So that, uh, number of thirteen hundred and forty-nine, do you know what the number on top of that would be for daily trips coming out of these two driveways that are, you know, literally within a block of each other?
I do not have that information with me. Uh, it is buried in the T I A report. We would have been provided the approved trips from the W M P O for that particular development, both for the daily. But of course, for a T I A, the impacts and the mitigations are identified only on the peak hour analysis. So we would have been provided the peak hour trips and Park Place, uh, only having one driveway onto Antoinette, the assumption would have been that one hundred percent of the trips from Park Place, uh, proceeded to Antoinette and then immediately proceeded to Carolina Beach Road and that was how the model was established.
Hmm. That's interesting. So you're not counting on using the, uh, the road of this proposed project? I, you know, I can't remember his name. Uh, that goes out here onto the service road.
That is correct. No reduction in trips at Antoinette Drive was considered as part of this modeling to pull traffic from Park Place and send it back through the proposed connection.
You mentioned earlier too, Don, while you were standing there, that, uh, there'd be a, actually a two hundred and sixty trips reduction uh, with the existing zoning, uh, I guess. But right now, there are two empty lots, uh, that are there. So there is no trips coming, correct?
Could you reset the question, please? I kind of lost track of it there.
I think the T I A shows that, shows zeros on it.
Yeah. I know, just, you made a comment in your, uh, a few minutes ago that there would be two hundred and sixty, uh, less trips, daily trips, uh, as a result if we, with the existing zoning as opposed to going with what we have right now, what you're proposing.
That is correct. If we used a twenty-five thousand square foot of retail and I think it was twenty-three single-family uni- single-family residential units that was in the staff report, it would came out, depending upon the methodology used on trip generation, between two hundred and sixty and two hundred and seventy trips per day, less for this site, this site only.
Yes.
Compared to the byright trip generation for this site and this site only.
Right. But once again, we're not considering B two here, uh, with the, you know, with this zoning and the currently, the condition is there are no trips coming off of this, uh, this site because it's undeveloped.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted, I know it's kind of an ongoing debate about how things are presented that way. Just wanted to make sure that, uh, we're clear on that. Uh, Mister Chair, I think that's all I've got at this point.
Okay. Anybody else?
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Taking into consideration Commissioner Zappel's conversations around schools, you know, I know that we've not really been having a lot of conversations ourselves about schools, but recognizing that our state does not allow us to have public facilities ordinances in place, uh, so we can't put the on... so we can't put the onus on developers to build new schools or provide resources for those. What are our plans, working with the school board, to address this? Because I think it's really our problem with the school board to address growth that we know is going to take place. I know we had an update with the schools this past year or so, looking at the possibility of a new school at River Lights, turning Mary C. Williamson into an alternative-type location to accommodate the growth that's taking place. But I know that's really our responsibility, not developers. How are we addressing that?
So Commissioners, clearly, we work with the school staff in putting together a capital request for you every year as part of your operating budget. I think it's fair to say, and certainly, we defer to both the elected bodies, but there's probably some disagreement. If you look at prior performance, and I don't mean academic, but the number of students attending, the numbers are going down. And so, as opposed to building new school capacity, we are continuing to wrestle with encouraging the school system to figure out how to capture unused space, where we do have a fair number of schools that are very much under capacity, to balance out through attendance zones and using what we have first. But I understand that those are policy decisions and finance decisions for the county commission first in negotiation with the school board. But other than renovations to the facilities that have been identified, specifically Pine Valley, and Mr. Barfield, you spoke to Mary C. Williams, bringing those into mid-twenty-first century design, I don't know that, from our staff perspective, we see growth that demands new schools. We certainly see use of facilities needing to be reconsidered, but not necessarily the construction of new capacity. And that's just based on the actual numbers when you look at attendance over the last decade and what the projected attendance is with birth generations and the like moving forward. So Commissioner Barfield, I hope I answered your question.
And you did. I actually interviewed with a local news media outlet here in the last month or so about this very thing. And, you know, my comment was, it's really the school board's challenge to adequately distribute students to schools that have capacity. And it's called redistricting, it's called moving kids. And it may upset parents, because we have this neighborhood schools concept, but it's not our task solely to tackle that problem. Unfortunately, the school board, for many years now, has not had a desire or appetite to address that. And so you do have some schools that are over capacity. I know several years ago, I was up in arms about the pre-K center that's now on College Road, when the county paid, I think, two million dollars for that building, and it sat there empty for several years. It sat there empty, and we're paying the debt service on it, because they were making other policy decisions. And finally, they decided to utilize that space. But I know I run the bell a good bit several years ago about that. But again, I know we don't have a public facility ordinance, so we can't put that on us, on the developers. You know, for me, if I, and I travel in this area quite a bit. I go to the A to Z to get gas for my propane tanks. And if I'm living in this development, I would take the service road to get in. To me, that's the most probable way to get in, as opposed to going down Antoinette Drive and making turns to a neighborhood. Getting out, I may take Antoinette Drive, I may just go to the service road, depending on where I'm trying to get to. Because there are towns where you can make that right turn and then hit the far-left lane and make a U-turn back up College Road, or make a U-turn to go back up Carolina Beach Road, depending on, you know, where you desire to go. Just a couple of comments that I have.
One thing is, you know, it's gonna end sometime or another, but that part of Carolina Beach Road is just getting picked on. And it's gonna start going north soon, and that'll ease things up. But, you know, the schools hadn't called us up and said we're in trouble.
I'm sorry, what you say?
I hear you, and I thank you, Mr. Barfield, for kind of bringing it. I guess my concern is that there seems to be no concern on the part of the development community when we're addressing the schools, because they don't have to. And we end up getting into a point where we're all kind of pointing at each other, and the school board refuses to accept redistricting, which does need to happen. And it's frustrating, because it boils down to the people, you know, in our community who are, you know, stuck having to deal with overcrowded classes in some areas. So it, and we see it right here, in the information we have in front of us. It says, there's going to be overcrowding at, you know, two, at Bellamy and also at Ashley. Not directly as a result of only this project, but the series of projects that we all along that area. And you're absolutely right, Bill, along Carolina Beach Road, we just keep adding on more and more. It's a great concern. The school board, I hope, is listening, and I hope that you are listening to this. This is where, this is the source of where your problems on overcrowding begin right here. And I hope that you'll reconsider redistricting, speaking to the school board. Well, I hope so, if it does anything to contribute to the public comments about this. Thank you.
I'll hold my comments for when we're having board discussion. I think we're still questioning the applicant.
There's no one to speak in opposition, so I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I had one more question for the, I guess, applicant or our engineering staff about how we're handling the stream that's running through the project.
So the stream that's running through the project will not be touched by this project. As for the stormwater, we did talk with Mr. Jamison at the last meeting, and it's my understanding that there are some downstream issues that will need to be worked through with both our project and towns at Park Place, and those will be handled through the TRC process.
So you're not piping it? You're leaving it open as an open stream?
Let me double-check, just to be sure. If we've gotten that far in our design, I'm not certain we have.
I see.
If we can pull up a site plan, I think that would be helpful. I think there's a stream that we're showing, and then there's also something along the back that people call a stream. So I just want to make sure we're talking about the right things.
My name is Grady Gordon with applicant. So there is a stream in the middle of the site, kind of where the dotted line is, and there would be a crossing there with the stormwater ponds on both sides of that.
Right, so what happens with, you know, a seven-to-eight inch rain event? And the stream flows outside of its boundaries? We're doing nothing to kind of control it. What happens to the roadways and the apartments that are in there?
So that was discussed at planning board, and it was monitoring that the county has improved some of the downstream culverts to allow that water to get back out to the Cape Fear River.
I see, so it flows down and takes a hard left-hand turn, if I'm following the dots right, to get to a culvert? Yeah, Tim, can you help us out here?
Yeah, so the stream that goes through the middle of the site, as he was describing, actually goes through the adjacent development that you were discussing for the traffic.
Right.
That development is analyzing the crossing under Antoinette Drive. In the process of that, they discovered it is too small. That is a DOT road. So we'll be passing that information to the DOT to address that when it comes time to replace that culvert and see if they can move that along a little bit quicker. I believe what Ms. Schaefer was referring to is actually looking at the next culvert downstream of that one as well. So that's been in discussions as part of the project development.
Can you address how the stream will take, again, a hard ninety-degree angle, left-hand turn, and then run to the, I guess, the east along the project, the way it's indicated here? Can you see the dotted line? Something has to happen there to make that happen. Some sort of large elbow, or streams don't naturally take ninety-degree turns?
Yes, as far as that goes, they'll have to take that into account in their calculations for the hydraulic function of that open channel. So they might have to armor that in some way to counter the effects of the natural progression of the water. We see that all the time in engineering and looking at the design of these drainage channels.
So we don't know, what's happening?
Yeah, a little bit further design, as they develop their design and move forward through the permitting process, that will all have to be part of their calculations and demonstrate that it is properly designed and meets our standards.
Okay, have you taken a look at the culvert that goes underneath the roadway, the internal roadway of this project?
Yeah, as part of that, they'd have to meet our design requirements, which is the twenty-five-year storm. And we have them look at the hundred-year as well to make sure finished floor elevations are not inundated as part of that.
Now you're talking what I'm after, all right. Thanks. Amy, did you want to add anything to that?
No, sir. I was just trying to see if there was a better map that we could see for illustrative purposes, but I definitely don't want to add anything to anything an engineer said, because it would just probably not be right.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else?
There may be a broader discussion, Mr. Chair, about some policy decisions that the school board should or should not make. But the task that we have before us today is to look to the application that's been submitted and determine whether or not it falls within the confines of the comprehensive plan. The planning board did a thorough evaluation and voted unanimously to recommend that we approve this application for rezone, and staff similarly concurred with the planning board's recommendation. I don't think that it's the responsibility, as Commissioner Barfield said, for the developer to tackle all things to all people. They are not responsible for construction of schools or for the potentiality of school overcrowding. But they do serve a very important role in our community, which is to help us increase the housing inventory that we are sorely lacking. So if I look to this application, it is complete. It seems to fall within the framework of what we ask these sort of applications to fall within. And to that end, it is my intention to vote in favor of this rezon request. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My only comments are that we are certainly in need of housing in this community. Certainly, folks are having to go all the way to Seventeenth Street, all the way downtown, to find places to live that they can afford. So I think this is a good area for that project, and I'm prepared to make a motion if you're ready.
I'd like, I'd like to say one thing. I, last week, I called up two of the largest rental companies for apartments and houses in Wilmington, and asked them what their rate was, occupancy rate. And one was ninety-six percent, and one was ninety-seven percent. And it can't get any higher than that, because you got people moving out, cleaning the apartment, and somebody else moving in. So we certainly do need them.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Before we move to a vote, I just feel that this particular project here is adding a lot of houses, a lot of units. And there are several, you know, hanging questions about it. I don't know that it's been fully developed. And this last issue I just brought up with the stormwater, we know we've had in the past with the large rainstorms miserable issues with flooding. And what I'm hearing is that that's, you know, to be determined in the future. So there is a certain responsibility on our part to ask for the questions, or is this project going to add to what could potentially be a situation that is not safe? And I don't know that I got the information the way it was presented today. And I know that there's more to go on through the TRC, but rarely, if ever, does anything not come out of the TRC. So it gives me pause to know that, again, we're adding two hundred units with the school overcrowding, which I know is not our job, but certainly to raise these questions, you know, within the community. And then adding to it the storm runoff situation where we have, we're actually not voting on one, you know, development here. It's those two combined. And I add to it, again, the access issue, and I know I'm being a stickler on this, you know, having a formal access. This new proposal can't make it without that, an official, firm access point running through that to get to Antoinette Drive. Again, I feel like that we don't have all the information at this time. So I'm uncomfortable moving forward, not to say that I don't think it's a good project, but I think that there needs to be more information for, to be a fully-developed project. Those are my thoughts.
You know, I think it's a little interesting that we talk about the schoolchildren and how many there'll be. We don't know. I mean, we don't know that anybody will move into that development that has a number of children that we're saying that they will or not. So we don't know if there will be any school crowding. That's just a statistic that we're using. So, I mean, if I were going to run an apartment, and I didn't like the school district, or I thought the schools were overcrowded, I'd go somewhere else. So I don't know that we can assume that that will overcrowd the schools.
Very briefly, Mr. Chair, I just want to respond in general terms that it's always the case that we'll have some degree of uncertainty in our minds about things that are in the future. It's the nature of human existence. But we do have some certainty, really, in my mind, as much certainty as we can hope for in this situation, whenever we've had a thorough vetting by our planning board. I trust them to do the work that they do, and similarly, that our staff has looked at what the planning board has done in this application and has concurred with that recommendation. So that's the sort of thing that makes me feel comfortable, although there may be some amount of doubt that exists in any particular project. There's not enough doubt out there for me to not recommend that we move forward at this time.
And I'll just apply, Mr. Chair. I understand Commissioner Zappel's concerns. What I heard from our county engineer was, there's a process. And we're not at the point of the process to answer those questions. But if those questions aren't answered as a part of the process, this project would not be approved through a TRC. And I don't want our staff to, I know we've had several insinuations of doubt of either the MPO or our staff, the folks that we've hired to do work on our behalf. And I don't want our staff to walk away thinking we don't trust what you bring to us or value what you all do, because we do. I rely on you all's information to help me make an informed decision. But I also understand that there's a process. And just like with this project here, if there's not a road that's approved through this other subdivision, then it's not gonna be approved based on the TIA. That's a part of the process. And we're not at that part yet. You know, I can't eat a cake until, bake a cake until I put all the ingredients in. And we're trying to put the ingredients in. And, but again, I don't want our staff or those that work for the county to think that we doubt what you all bring to the table, because we don't, we value what you all do. Just want to make sure y'all hear that very clearly from this one commissioner. Thank you.
Before we proceed with the vote, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
We'd like to proceed this evening, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed rezoning. I find it consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan, because the district is more in line with the densities recommended for urban mixed-use areas, especially in growth nodes, than the existing residential zoning. I also find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest, because of the development would provide a mix of housing types and appropriate transition from the commercial node to the single-family residence to the south and the west, with the proposed condition that the buildings will have a maximum height of three stories.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Four one? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And number eight is a request by Douglas Grant, property owner, for the use of a campground in RV Park at three parcels located at eighty-one oh two, eighty-one oh four, and eighty-one oh six Sitt Berry Road, zoned R fifteen, residential, and totaling approximately nineteen point two one acres. This is a closet additional hearing. Before the hearing is open, Deputy County Attorney will provide an overview of the hearing procedures. hearing procedures. Because a special use permit process requires a quasi-digital hearing, any person wishing to testify must be sworn in. All persons who signed in to speak and wish to present competent and material testimony please step forward to be sworn in. Thank you.
To be sworn in? Go to Kim.
Good Lord.
While they're being sworn in, Commissioners, thank you so much. As you will recall and more from the public's education at this point, the following four findings must be set out as findings of fact, it must be clearly stated in the record when it comes to an SUP. The first finding should be, will the project materially endanger the public health or safety? Does this meet all required conditions and specifications of the Unified Development Ordinance, also called as U D O? Will this substantially injure the value of the adjoining or abutting property? And will this be in harmony with the area in which it is located and in general conformity with the comprehensive land use plan for New Hanover County? Staff has compiled information from the applicant that may or may not support these findings of fact, and you'll find that in your packet. The Board of Commissioners must state the reasons why the application does not meet the four findings, if that is the decision, and if the Board determines that any of the above findings cannot be based on evidence, that alone might be the basis for the denial. The Board only needs to find that the evidence does not support one finding, not all four, to deny the application. Board has the authority to determine if this application should be approved or denied based solely on the competent and material evidence presented during the public hearing tonight. The Board may also consider, or may add, conditions to the special use permit as agreed upon. If you have any further questions, I'm here for those. Thank you.
Okay, we hear a presentation from the staff. The applicant and any opponents will each have fifteen minutes total together for their presentation and additional five minutes of rebuttal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Board. As you just heard, this is a special use permit request for a proposed RV park in an R fifteen zoning district. Site is located in the eighty-one hundred block of Sidbury Road, and from the aerial photography, we can see the site is currently wooded and bordered by a single-family residential to the north and south, and equestrian facility to the east, and state conservation land to the west. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles. The parcels were originally Zoned R fifteen in the nineteen seventies. At the time, the purpose of the district was to ensure housing densities remain lower due to the need for private wells and septic systems. Future county utilities will be extended to the area west of the future Hampstead bypass, due to NC DOT wetland mitigation land to the west, and the Seagreen Farms Conservation Land to the southeast. Sewers expected to be served by either private wells and septic systems or Pender County RV parks are permitted with a special use permit in most low to moderate density residential districts to ensure they are appropriately evaluated for the specific site and surrounding uses. Section four point three of the Unified Development Ordinance contains supplementary standards for RV parks that regulate the number and size of spaces, open space, setbacks, access, and requirements for environmental health approval of private wells and septic systems. Proposed concept plan is for a sixty-six space RV park that includes a maintenance building, a management office and laundry facility, a clubhouse with bathrooms and a pool, approximately half an acre of open space adjacent to a proposed stormwater pond, and four areas of the property have been designated for the future septic. The applicant is also proposing an additional fifty-foot vegetated buffer around the perimeter of the property. Property has direct full access to Sidbury Road. The nearby Farm Road is an unimproved private right-of-way that does not provide access to the site. Additionally, the site is immediately east of the future Hampstead bypass and has an anticipated completion date of twenty thirty. The proposed project is located along a DOT secondary road that has available capacity. As currently zoned, the property could support a maximum forty-eight dwelling units, which would generate approximately thirty-eight AM and fifty PM peak hour trips. The proposed project is estimated to reduce the estimated traffic generation by approximately half, which is below the ordinance requirement for a traffic impact analysis. NC DOT driveway permit requirements must be met to address site access conditions before the project and receive a final certificate of occupancy. Comprehensive plan designates this property as community mixed use. Plan does not provide specific policy direction for the proposed use, but one of the goals of the plan is to support business success and promote place-based economic development. Community mixed use place type also states that typically, large-scale, lower-density commercial developments are incompatible with the place type, which focuses on small-scale, compact, mixed-use development patterns that serve all modes of travel. Types of appropriate uses include office, retail, mixed-use, recreational, commercial, institutional, and multifamily and single-family residential. As a reminder, when the Board of Commissioners evaluates a request for approval during a quasi-digital hearing, they must determine that the following four conditions are met: that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and approved, the use meets all required conditions and specifications of the Unified Development Ordinance, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or the use is a public necessity, and the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan and submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the comprehensive land use plan for New Hanover County. After an analysis of the proposed use and the information provided as part of the application package, staff have compiled the facts provided in the application and identified through technical review and analysis and organized them by the applicable conclusion. These findings are preliminary and additional relevant facts may be presented during the public hearing. Compiled facts may or may not support the Board's ultimate conclusion. For conclusion one, the preliminary findings generally address utilities, fire protection, access, environmental features, and traffic. For conclusion two, the preliminary findings address compliance with the various ordinance requirements for RV parks, which include the minimum number of spaces, minimum space size, setbacks, flood hazard areas, roadway standards, limited access for individual spaces, drainage, block length, number of driveways, restroom facilities, swimming pool health and safety requirements, internal directional signs, restroom health and lighting requirements, private water and sewer health requirements, minimum open space, hydrants, trash collection, maintenance offices, and a requirement to maintain a register of guests and their length of stay. For conclusion three, the preliminary findings address existing site conditions and land uses, and conclusion four addresses the comprehensive plan. This concludes my part of the presentation. Scott James with the W NPO and Tim Low of County Engineering are president, and the applicant is present and has prepared a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Matt Nichols, and I'm going to turn it here in Wilmington. I'm representing the applicant, and we appreciate the opportunity to make a brief presentation. Staff has done an excellent job with the staff report and has been great to work with, so I will highlight a few of the things, and then we're certainly here to answer any questions that the Board may have. I'll first start with the location. It's a very good location for the proposed use. My client, the applicant owner, Doug Grant, purchased the property in twenty thirteen, so he's had the property about ten years, and he actually lives in the sort of rear of the property. He's got four tracks, and he's proposing the RV park on the roughly nineteen or so acres on the front of his property, and his intent and plan is to continue to live in his house and run and operate this RV park on a daily basis. You can see from the surrounding properties that we've got the horse farm, the Russell's Reach Horse Farm on the east, to the south, and west is the NC DOT property, my client's property to the south, and then low-density residential to the north. And you can, and I would point out, as you'll see through the slide, the future slides, you'll see that we're providing some significant buffering along the residential to the north. A few things on the site plan, and I'll sort of zoom in on the site plan a little bit. The site has really good access internally. There's no cul-de-sacs or dead-end roads, and none of the roads are intended to be closed. It has a good internal circulation. Mr. Farrell pointed out that really there's only three proposed buildings on site. It's an office and laundry building as you enter further down off of Sidbury. There's a swimming pool and clubhouse and bath facilities, and then there is a maintenance building. And all of these are one-story, these are low-impact, low-level buildings, and they're significantly lower than you would see if it was a, you could in an R fifteen district build a forty-foot house. So these heights are in line with the R fifteen district. The one thing, we did have a community meeting in May, I thought it was a very good meeting, wasn't required as part of the process, but we certainly had one, and I thought it was very beneficial to have that. One of the things that my client has agreed to do and has shown on the plan is this fifty-foot perimeter buffer, and that's really a pretty significant buffering. You'll see in a few of these photographs what that looks like and places. And then we've also agreed to put a privacy fence along the entrance road at the front, putting the RV spaces centered more toward the back of the property, toward my client's property, but again, even along the Farm Road, which is a private road, and the DOT property, and the horse farm, we're still providing that fifty-foot buffer. Here's a picture of my client's existing driveway. This would be looking back toward, if you were leaving his house, going back towards Sidbury Road. You can see his driveway, and then that's pretty representative in that location of what the buffering looks like. Again, this is, the horse farm would be off to the right of the screen, beyond the buffer. And then here's just another picture, this is looking back towards Sidbury, and then here's just sort of a closer look. I think this is looking back toward his house, just to give you an idea of, it's pretty, it's pretty dense vegetation in there. We have some color renderings here, and I'll move through these quickly. A few things that I would point out with the RV spaces is, these are, my client's certainly not maxing out the site. The ordinance provides for a minimum of two thousand square feet for the RV site, and the vast majority of the sites, fifty-five of the sixty-six sites are three thousand square feet, so roughly fifty percent, if I'm doing the math correctly, they're greater than the minimum. And so he could have put more sites on there, but again, is trying to have a high-quality development, and with his residents there, him wanting to be the owner-operator wants to have a nice site. And each RV site abuts the internal roadway, there's no direct access onto any public roads. And here's just some renderings of what the pool and the, that would be the bathroom facilities and poolhouse would look like. And again, these sites are very family-oriented, this is outdoor recreation use, it's low-impact use. I know in the staff report, staff mentioned that the planning staff hasn't received inquiries about RV camping in the unincorporated part of the county, and this would serve a need for that. I think it's, we would respectfully contend that it's good for the economy, it's good for local business, and it's consistent and in line with the rural development patterns and the low-density development in that particular vicinity. The applicant, my client's proposing a number of conditions here for the Board's consideration, which would be the fifty-foot perimeter buffer, no cabins or park model homes. I know one of the things that was important to the residents at the community meeting was not this, not to be a permanent housing or long-term housing. So maximum stay of thirty consecutive days would be the maximum, and this is intended for temporary operational RV usage. This is not for any sort of permanent usage, the maximum stay would be thirty days. And no RV storage on site would be one of the conditions that we would propose. The ordinance does allow for one RV or mobile home site, one mobile home to be in the site for the purposes of the operation, so we would like to have that as a allowance, which is allowed in the ordinance. And then I think it's important to point out that each of the RV sites will have individual connections to water, electric, and the internal septic system. So this is not the tent camping, it's not the sort of dry camping, this is all connected to the water, electric, and the septic system. I just wanted to point this out, again, in the R fifteen district, the minimum setback for the rear is twenty feet, and the maximum building height's forty feet. I think this is significantly lower impact than that or in line with what you would see in the R fifteen district. And just to summarize, the benefits of the project would be, you'd be restricted to the uses on site and, of course, subject any conditions the Board puts on there. We'd be limited to those uses and the conditions. We're essentially doubling or more than doubling the setback. The buildings are going to be significantly less than forty feet tall, no impact on county schools. This is purely temporary use, recreational use, and it does support tourism and industry and the local economy, as indicated in your staff report. So I know the Board looks at the four individual criteria. With the first one, I was going to call Mr. Don Bennett. We weren't required to do a TIA, we didn't do a, we didn't do a TIA, but we did a traffic study, and I'd like Don to mention those findings, if you could, Don, briefly. And while Don was speaking, I did have a copy of the TIA, and I've got a copy of some other items that are included in here, and I'll hand those to your county attorney, and I'll explain it with each one of them.
Good evening, Don Bennett, Davenport, fifty-nine seventeen Oleander Drive. As he mentioned, a technical memorandum was provided to summarize some of the concerns raised at the community meeting. One of those concerns was the trip generation, and of course, keeping consistent with the county staff report, our numbers a little differently because we had some different assumptions going in, however, there is still a substantial reduction in trips between the proposed use and the, the proposed use and the, excuse me, the byright use. The other concern that was raised was the ability of vehicles to ingress and egress the site. Looking at the existing Sidbury Road, the estimated ADT is around thirty-two hundred vehicles per day, three thousand two hundred vehicles per day. In general terms, the Department of Transportation does not require turn lanes or any kind of improvements to the public roadway system until you hit about a four thousand trip-a-day threshold, so we did not examine the need for turn lanes. However, site distance was examined for all movements entering and exiting the site, and site distance provided was found to be in excess of the site distance required. As the project goes through the North Carolina Department of Transportation site driveway permitting process, they will also look at these site distances again and may require additional site distance triangles or site distance easements for maintenance purposes through that process. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, in the packet that was handed to you, there's essentially five tabs. The first one is the letter that's before you from Jim Cornet. He's our professional geologist. Mr. Cornet is here to answer any questions you may have about water or the septic system. There's another report in there, or letter, from Davy Resource Group, that's tab two, and that's shown on the screen, but that's the July twenty-second letter from Davy Resource Group. Number three is a forestry plan, it's dated twenty fourteen. The property does have a woodland management plan on the property, and we provided this information to the county previously. And then number four is the report that Mr. Bennett just referenced, and Mr. Bennett's, of course, here to answer any questions you may have about his technical memorandum. In the staff report, a couple of things I'll point out that I thought were important is, the property's not in a flood hazard zone, there's no wetlands on the property, the property is not within a natural heritage area, and the New Hanover County Conservation Resource map indicates no conservation resources present on the site. We would respectfully contend that we meet all of the requirements in the ordinance for the RV park. That's stated in your staff report. I've got an excerpt here, Mr. Farrell had mentioned that, and there are quite a few as far as special use permits go. And there are quite a few, as far as special-use permits go. Almost three pages there, single-spaced requirements, A through V, which is, I think, on the higher side of requirements. And I think it just goes to show you of all the requirements you have to meet, have to have to have one of these sites, and you can't be in the flood zone. You have to meet all the different requirements. And we respectfully contend we do meet all those requirements. With regard to property values, I'll introduce Mr. Cal Morgan, who has prepared a letter report. That's tab five, and what was handed out to you, Mr. Morgan.
Good evening, Cal Morgan. I'm a North Carolina Certified General MAI Appraiser. So I was recently engaged to conclude an opinion as to item six-three of the applicant's special-use permit application, which states, "The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity." To develop an opinion for this requirement, I researched several RV parks and their surrounding properties. The analysis included reviewing the sales history and the sales prices of residential properties that are adjacent to existing RV parks, then comparing that data to the sales history and the sales prices of similar residential properties in the same subdivision or on the same street that were not adjacent to the RV park. Parks that I reviewed are the following: KOA Nogden, Topsail Sound RV Park, Ocean Air Travel Park. More parks were reviewed, however, like the subject property, most RV parks are not adjacent to enough properties for any meaningful type of analysis to be completed. Based on the data that I reviewed, there's no indication that being located adjacent to the proposed RV park would have a negative impact on any of the property values of the six adjacent properties or any nearby property. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Bennett, you're all down to one forty?
Yes, sir. I'm going to wrap things up here. Just real quickly, we would contend that we are in harmony. We are in the community mixed-use place type. I won't go through this in detail. I know the board's very familiar with the different place types, but that's set forth in the staff packet to the board. I would just note, too, that, as mentioned at the beginning of the hearing, this is quasi-judicial hearing, and the decision must be based upon the competent materials, substantial evidence, and the record. This is excerpts from a school government publication on special quasi-judicial decisions, and I thought this was a good quote, although I'd probably change the word "political" to "legislative," but the point being that legislatively, the board has determined that the district is appropriate for the RV park if you meet all the requirements. And unlike a rezoning with the first two items that the board heard. So we would contend in conclusion, Mr. Chairman, that we do meet all the requirements in the ordinance for the issuance of the permit. And we appreciate your consideration of the request. I forgot to introduce Jimmy Fintris, our civil engineer with Stroud Engineering, is also here. If you have any questions, Jimmy can help address those. I'm out of time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I did want to mention that the conditions that were referenced are on page eight-eight-two of your agenda packet.
Thank you. We've got one speaker in opposition, Kevin Hudson. Mr. Hudson, you've got fifteen minutes.
Thank you. I should take just a couple of minutes. Kevin Hudson, eighty-one hundred Sidbury Road. Me and Mr. Grant share the same entryway. The only thing I would be concerned of, and I mentioned that to him, he's reached out to me last week and said he would put up an eight-foot privacy fence right there on the property by the driveway, but he said he would leave my two accesses. I have a circle driveway. He said that in person, so I want to make sure that's on record. Let's see. Because I did voice my concerns of noise, as well as possibly putting in a contract when the guests sign in, when they come to visit, possibly put in, you know, no trespassing on my property. That's the only thing I'm concerned of, noise and people just wandering around, which is possible. There are three other subdivisions coming in. You did a road study of thirty-two hundred cars per day. Does that, I know they didn't have to do a traffic study, but just keep that in account. That's thirty-two hundred a day. There are very large places coming up very soon. They're building massive on each end of Sidbury Road, so that will increase. Size, I think that's all I have. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the applicant has five minutes of rebuttal. They would like to speak, or someone else speak?
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, with regard to Mr. Hudson's point, certainly, my clients will honor the circular driveway access that he has there. That's no problem at all. With regard to fencing, I know my client has had discussions with Mr. Hudson, and it sounds like those were productive discussions, and he certainly wants to be, has been a good neighbor, would like to continue to be a good neighbor. And if there was a specific, I apologize if I missed a specific request that Mr. Hudson had. We're certainly willing to accommodate that. The fencing, the driveway access, if he wants some signage up, I don't see that being a problem at all. I know that, I think there was a couple neighbors that might want to speak on the item, so I would defer my time if that's possible.
They're included in your five minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. And before I conclude, I would say, just respectfully, if we could make sure that the presentation, the staff report, the application, and the handout set I had would be admitted into the record. And I think that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Nancy Parrott. If you would just state your name and your address, Miss Parrott.
Nancy Parrott, eight-zero-two-six Sidbury Road. I am the triangle on the map. And I know Mr. Grant has done his best to be a good neighbor to all of us, and since my property actually butts up more as far as length, that I am definitely, what's the word? Anyway, he's a good neighbor. I have no problem with anything.
Thank you, ma'am.
And ma'am, you on the horse farm?
No, I'm on the meat.
Kimberly Nigel?
Hi, I'm Kimberly Nichol, and I own the property eighty-one-twenty Sidbury Road, which is the equestrian horse boarding riding facility. We're also the home of the Coastal Therapeutic Riding Program. So our purpose is to provide adaptive equine therapies for those with special needs. Our property is directly adjacent to the proposed RV park, sharing about a thousand feet of property line. We do have concerns, just in general, about what's happening in our community. We're sad that development is coming to our whole quiet area, and we see that that's the future. We don't really want it, but we see that that's what's coming. We don't want to be the next Gordon Road, honestly, between the traffic issues that are escalating daily with the development that's coming, and then the school issues that we talked about in your previous requests. So we ask that, as you're looking at planning while in advance for road and community improvements, to withstand the increase in population in our area as a part of, you know, what y'all do. We appreciate that. Our concerns about the RV parks specifically are similar to those in the Castle Hain RV Park hearing, that the slow-moving vehicles entering and exiting so close to the curve. We've had quite a lot of accidents in that curve, and my house is right there, and I hear them. We also are concerned about excessive noise in a campground, especially fireworks. That would be very concerning for our horses. And then trespassers disturbing the animals. So Doug has been a great neighbor to us for ten years, and has allowed us to use a slice of his property to access our pasture fence line. And we have an agreement with him that he will enforce strict rules about noise and trespassing. And he's agreed to also consider, you know, installing that fencing for us if we do have a problem with people crossing the property line. So if that becomes necessary, we have an agreement that he would install fencing for us as well. He's assured us that he intends the property to remain quiet and peaceful, as he's also living on-site. So we'd like to support this project and consider all those concerns and questions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have just a quick question for the applicant, or Mr. Nichol. Is that management on-site? Is that going to be twenty-four-hour management, someone on the property?
I know Mr. Grant will continue to live there, and you will have, yes, is that answered to that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm living, I'm an adjoining property owner, and I will be there.
You can come out if you like. Yes, yes. That's his residence now. That is his residence now. He intends to be the management.
I was thinking about this gentleman's concerns about noise. There's going to be management on the property?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any discussion?
Ma'am, I just had a question. Will a potential client with an RV be able to stay the thirty days and then pull off the site, do a U-turn, and come right back on and qualify for another thirty days?
I think that question may have come up. That's certainly not the intent. We, if the board has concerns with that, I mean, certainly, if there's additional safeguards to put in that, I think clearly there's an element of good faith in that condition. If you were to sort of scratch the surface and someone leaves the site for five minutes and comes back and connects, I would say that's a violation of the condition. That's not the intent of that. It was to prevent or prohibit the long-term usage in thirty days was what we took away from the community meeting, that was a sort of a good, a good benchmark for thirty days. But point well made, Commissioner Zapple. We're glad to have more teeth in that provision, if that's necessary. But I would agree with you. That would, that would not be the intent, and I think that would be violating the spirit and intent of the condition.
Matt, I know you mentioned the six conditions, and does the applicant agree to adding those six conditions that were brought up here to the formal agreement?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And I think Kimberly addressed this, but I just want to make sure, again, that the applicant understands, and clearly, you, Mr. Grant's been living there for a while, that that equestrian farm next door is a teaching facility that has a lot of children and a lot of horses. I know the noise was addressed, but the, you know, I know there's a handshake agreement right now, that if you see people migrating, coming over, obviously, children living in the RVs, going over to see and, you know, what's going on over there, that there'll be some kind of control to prevent that in the future. Is that the way you understand it?
Yes, sir. That is how I understand it. That vegetative buffer in there is pretty, it's pretty significant. I don't, I don't know that, I don't, I can't sit here and say that is not a possibility that that could happen, but clearly, that's not what we would want to happen. The Russell's reach has been great. We actually had our community meeting there. It's a beautiful facility. I know that my client doesn't want anything negative to happen to that. They've been good neighbors. My client's, like I said, he's had his property for about a decade now. And so I think there, I think there are actually two really good uses that could, that could be next together in a very positive way. And that's certainly the intent. But we, we don't want, we don't want to cause any problems, and I don't think it will cause any problems for the horse farm, but I know my client would address that immediately. And he's here to speak to the board, if you'd like to hear it directly from him.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Zapple?
If you could state your name and address, please.
My name, excuse me, my name is Doug Grant. I live at eighty-one-ten Sidbury Road. Regarding your questions, Commissioner Zapple, this will be cut and dry like I've expressed to Kim and Tim, some of the other neighbors. In the rules, if anybody, this will be clearly marked, the bounds of the campground, and if they exit that, they are gone. No refunds. I've lived back there for ten years. I love it. I'm not going to put up with them coming onto my property. I mean, it's, it's not going to happen. Regarding noise, that, Mr. Hudson, Mr. Hudson's, the front of Mr. Hudson's house to the foundation is closer to Sidbury Road than my current driveway, in a fifty-five mile-an-hour speed zone. It's going to be a maximum of ten mile-an-hour when you turn in. I do not feel like noise is going to be an issue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grant, for making those comments.
Does the applicant agree with our staff findings?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I had one more question, if I could. Could you, Matt, please address the soils type. I noticed in the, in the staff report that we got soils type III, which will not support a septic system. So has the engineering determined where on the property this septic system could be placed?
I'm going to have the geologist and Mr. Fintris, if they don't mind, coming up. And I don't know which one, Jim, Jim's probably the one to answer the question.
Commissioners, James Cornet, eighteen-twenty-seven Washington Acres Drive in beautiful Hampstead. Commissioners Apples, good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
We did not perform the analysis. Davy Group did. However, I have visited the site, and I have reviewed their maps and their report. There's about seven acres of good soils on the property. This is going to take about a hundred gallons per day, per RV, so about six thousand, six-hundred gallons. There is, the intent is to do three different clustered nitrification fields. And so we're actually going to segregate in three different areas, in three of the different good soil areas. And so the type III soil that you talked to is a slightly clay-gelomy sand, and it will do fine with this. So we have at least two feet of soil separation, up to twenty-eight inches, the seasonal high water table will not be a problem. We'll probably do an LPP, low-pressure pipe system, and it'll, it'll work. And all this permitting will actually be through engineered option permitting with AOWE oversight, with our soil scientists. Answer your question.
As always.
Thank you, sir.
You raised my comfort level a lot when you stood up.
Thanks, you.
Thank you, James.
Any other questions about the water or wastewater? Good deal.
Mr. Chair, I think that it's awfully nice to see neighbors being neighborly to one another and
Absolutely.
agreeing that there is a way to move forward with this. And as such, I think that with everything else being considered, I'd like to make a motion to approve the permit, as the board finds that this application for a special-use permit meets the four required conclusions based on the findings of fact included in the staff report and additional evidence presented at the public hearing, subject to the conditions previously identified and agreed to by the applicant, numbers one through six.
All in. All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were looking for a second.
I wasn't sure what he said.
I couldn't hear.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Attorney? Is there anything?
Mr. Chairman, just three quick points for the benefit of anybody watching. The LGC is going to consider your debt application tomorrow for Project Grace in Boone. The staff findings indicated favorability, as we read the agenda last week. Parallel to that, that I think is an important point to share, is last week, both Moody's and Standard and Pors reaffirmed your AAA bond ratings. So you learned of that last week. We're going to put that out tomorrow, or actually this We're going to put that out tomorrow, or actually, this evening, in the form of a press release. And then you saw the good news just before this meeting started, that one month in on sales tax collections, I know it's odd to say that, because July was three months ago. Those dollars show up three months in arrears. You are ahead of collections than what the budget estimate was. And so three things I think the board would want to know and need to know, particularly as we head to Boone in the morning to present, I believe, present yet again for Project Grace.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, and one comment. Actually, Mr. County Manager, it's come to our attention that there's a commentary in the public square concerning the use of the $300 million Revenue Stabilization Fund and the interest earnings coming from that fund. Could you just briefly remind us and the public of what we're using those monies for and the good work that we're currently doing throughout our community with those funds? And also, if you may, the impact of our property tax rate, which, as I recall, is the lowest of our, you know, of the urban counties in one hundred counties in the state of North Carolina. Could you elaborate on that, please?
Yes, sir. And I'll begin, I think, acknowledging your last statement. You do have the lowest tax rate in terms of property tax of what you would, I'm sorry, not what you would, but what staff would compare, can believe your peer counties to be. And those are the other fourteen urban counties in the state of North Carolina. Certainly, your rate is the lowest, to my knowledge. I think there's two ways that the board has chosen to use both interest and ostensibly some corpus from the Revenue Stabilization Fund. The first is the board has cut taxes two and a half cents. So that's about a five percent, five-point-two-five percent tax cut as it relates to the rate. You have also pledged interest earnings almost exclusively to your community building program. And some of the things that you've done over the last two years would include the capacity building funds that you gave to the nonprofit community, that was 1.2 million last year, also planned to be reprogrammed this year. You approved it in the budget, ensuring that there are school resource officers in every elementary school, that was about 1.2 million, increasing the number of school resource officers in your impact zone of focus, which is seven schools. As you may have remember from last week, we broadened where we're deploying community resource coordinators to be into more schools, but the impact zone is still the seven that have been identified. The board has aggressively funded and expanded pre-K expansion. So you have used the interest proceeds to fund community building. You are prepared to use the corpus, if necessary, to absorb the tax cut. We won't know if that's necessary until the end of the fiscal year, but after a report like you just received from the finance officer today, I believe you'll end up maintaining that corpus. So the 300 million will remain the principal base, and you'll continue to have the opportunity to spend interest earnings. So those are just illustrations of how you used it, but it's primarily been to cut taxes, lower taxes, and to fund the community building program.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Nothing else, this meeting's over.